Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Falls Township Board of Supervisors meeting for November 19th, 2019. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Fulon?
Mr. Bowaway?
Here.
Mr. Bariste?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
Mr. Vence?
Here.
Okay. Good evening, and is our breaking thing already? Welcome to our newest member of our administrative staff, Mr. Tequitas in the front row, our new deputy manager and code enforcement zoning officer. He's so new, we don't even have a spot for him at the table yet. All right, a couple of names on the list for public comment. Donna Markert?
My name is Donna Markert. I'm a 64-year resident of Falls Township. That just serves as a reminder. Earlier this year, I attended a meeting of the Bucks County Commissioners to talk about the Elcon issue here in Falls Township. One of the interesting aspects of attending that meeting was they spoke about the open space conservation programs they had, and it was very successful, or seems to be very successful, in Bucks County. During that meeting, I asked them a question about, what do you think about preserving the inhabited spaces of the county as well? Because we have people living in areas that are highly polluted, air quality stinks, you know, we have water issues around the county, so it's pretty significant they should have an initiative as well to deal with the inhabited spaces that we currently occupy. I admire the program, and I think it's a great thing. Since the beginning of the Reagan administration, we've seen regulatory agencies of the federal and state governments dismount or to render impotent by slashes in funding, staffing levels, reductions in the level of expertise of their employees, and elimination of or severe curtailment of their enforcement capabilities. This is the reason for the push to engage local governments in regulation, oversight, and enforcement roles that have been vacated by agencies at the state and federal level. During the March Pennsylvania DEP presentation on Elcon, my understanding of the DEP's roles and responsibilities were to check the boxes, rubber stamp the permit application. On November 18th, 2019, there was an article that appeared in The New Yorker, "The Case Against Boeing," that's really interesting in terms of how we deal with regulation and oversight and enforcement at virtually every level of government today. There's a quote in the New Yorker article from a 1993 book entitled Collision Course by Ralph Nader and Wesley J. Smith that describes the conditions in 1993, but it turns out to be extraordinarily prescient of the conditions that we see today. I'm going to read you the quote. It's in two parts. Quote, "It's unfortunate fact that government oversight and enforcement is so underfunded and understaffed that regulators and inspectors must rely upon the integrity and good faith those that regulate to obey the rules. If a company is determined to cut corners, there's every likelihood that it will succeed, at least for a while." That's an interesting statement. It was apparent to me that during the PEP presentation, that they're deficient in some of the requisite requirements necessary to deal with understanding what goes on in terms of providing a permit to anybody who wants to operate. And we're dealing specifically with the case of Elcon, though I'm not here to discuss Elcon, I'm here to discuss the atmosphere around Elcon. So you deal with the required information. As I spoke to Mr. Rabarchak after the meeting, I found a kind of telling that he didn't really understand the scope of what was going on in the lower end of the county, specifically in Falls Township. So I had to impart some of my experiential knowledge to him, which he didn't really care to hear. So, dealing with the issues here, we have a very densely populated area, not just in Falls Township and Lower Bucks, but across the river. It's very important to understand that, you know, whatever we do here has direct implications for the people across the river, not just locally. You know, in 64 years, I think I conveyed to you my experience here in Falls Township with regard to the steel mill and waste management and everybody else, that these problems persist. And there's some interesting aspects to that that are pretty disturbing to me. The PEP, by its own admission, is heavily dependent on the applicant for information about the processes, feedstock composition, process output products, process monitoring, and reporting. The interesting aspect of that, when you've talked to the PEP, they're not going to do any independent monitoring or assessment of what goes on at any site. They don't do it today, they're not going to do it in the future. So if you don't measure something, how do you effectively manage it? Especially when the case is that it's up to the individual company to manage and measure its own pollution streams. Kind of ridiculous. And if you look at the Boeing circumstance, we're dealing with a 737 MAX, it's an interesting discussion about why things fail if profits become the only motivation to do anything. I'm going to send you that article, by the way. Hopefully, you can read it. The PEP admits that its enforcement capabilities are limited. They said to us, the maximum fine they could levy was $25,000. That was my recollection. I could be wrong. But you know what? In this day and age, fines don't mean anything. I worked in the steel industry and the chemistry industry, that's it, I'm sorry, chemistry industry for years, and look, fines were the cost of doing business. So I just ask you to undertake an effort to look what you can do locally, to deal with regulation and oversight and enforcement, because clearly, the state and federal governments have abandoned their responsibility. I'm going to send you my comments, since I didn't get through them all, but I thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Jerry Hewitt? I may have mispronounced your name, I apologize, Jerry. Was I close?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Good evening. As Mr. Harvey said, I'm Jerry Hewitt, and I'm the president of the Avon Row condo association. We're a 55 and older community at Arlene's and Lincoln Highway, Trenton Road area. I'm not here to complain about anything, we just want to thank the board and everyone in the township for the great support that we've gotten from the board across the whole township through the years. And as Mr. Harvey moves on to other bigger and better things, it's an appropriate time to thank him in particular. He's always been very supportive of our community, not only with the e-cycling event that he organized, he's been to our annual picnic, he's just really helped us in many different ways, and we appreciate that, Bob. Also, Fire Marshal Dipolito, Rich Dipolito, has always helped our seniors, replacing batteries for many years, replacing smoke detectors, and helping us in that. That's been very helpful, especially for seniors who can't always do that themselves. Police Chief Bill Wilcox has always been very supportive in making our community feel well, feel safe with the patrols that go throughout Avon Row. And everyone else, I know I've never heard of a comment where we didn't get full support from Falls Township, and we appreciate that. I do have two other board members I'd just like to introduce, June Boris and Bob Gahn, who are there also from Falls, and we all join in this. Thank you again for everything, and we continue to support the township and are proud to be here.
Thank you, Jerry, appreciate that.
Thank you.
We're proud to have you. Tony Batiste?
I would just like to thank our engineer for coming out and checking on the sidewalk problem that I brought up last month. Hopefully, it's going to be resolved. The second thing, is there anything new on the Elcon front or on the lawsuit?
I'm not aware of any changes regarding the lawsuit, or nothing's come to us in terms of any kind of land development issues, it's all the courts at this point. I guess we're waiting for things to be scheduled, is that accurate?
The applicant had filed a motion for conference with the judge, and has not yet been scheduled.
Okay.
Is there any way to put that on the website, so I don't have to ask everyone?
What on the web, just an update that nothing's happening?
Yeah, just even to say, nothing new, or everything's still status quo?
Then we wouldn't get a chance to talk to you. Those are all the residents that had, and any of the residents wish to speak? Okay. Non-resident sign-in sheet, Lisa Baxter?
Do they both work?
I think so. Yeah, that one does, you can hear that one.
Hi. Put my glasses on. And first of all, congratulations to the two of you.
Thank you.
And I hope, Mr. Harvey, as you move on, that you keep Falls in mind, and everybody down here.
I'm still living here, so I'm not planning on moving. Everybody thinks I'm, everybody, a lot of people think I'm just a...
Yeah, because...
The Commissioner's mansion up there?
Yeah.
Yeah. I asked if there was like a White House I could live in up there, there's not, so...
I think I mentioned before the statistic of Falls being responsible for two-thirds of the industrial pollution in Bucks County, as a commissioner. That would kind of be a piece of the puzzle.
Sure.
We presented you with a draft Clean Air Ordinance on September 19th, 2018. It was developed by our environmental attorney, Mike Ewell. Last we heard, you were considering hiring an environmental attorney on behalf of Falls Township to consider a Clean Air Ordinance, and researched options for the township to adopt a more protective local air law. So the first thing, I was wondering if you could please give us an update on the progress of adopting a Clean Air Ordinance, and tell us where you are with that?
I don't recall saying we're going to hire anybody regarding an environmental attorney, no. I mean, I know, you know, we've obviously, our legal team has reviewed it, it's been reviewed a couple of different times, I can turn it over to them in terms of their review. I don't think anything has changed, quite frankly, in terms of how it falls within our powers, or doesn't fall within our powers of something we can do.
We are, as we frequently do with issues like this, we are reviewing the case law to see if there have been any recent developments. And I think what we have found so far does not change our opinion from last year, that Falls is not authorized to adopt that ordinance.
We can adopt it, we just can't enforce it.
Yeah, it's challenged, we would lose.
Nobody has contacted Mike Ewell, who wrote the ordinance, so if you have questions...
I've spoken with Mr. Ewell.
Yeah, but you spoke with him, and you never followed up?
No, I did. I spoke with him. And I don't know what you mean by, I didn't follow up with him, but I spoke with him.
Well, the way I understood it, anyway, were that the township had quite a few questions, and that he would most likely be able to address at least some of that.
I don't recall having a lot of questions from Mr. Ewell.
He has cases that he has worked on that probably would be applicable. And obviously, each township is different. We paid him to write the Clean Air Ordinance, but his experience, he's offered as part of that to help the township work on it, on our behalf and on the behalf of all the residents. So it would probably be to the benefit of the township and to all the residents to use him as a resource. And that doesn't mean you have to use him in terms of using him as an attorney for the township, but just, you know, to ask him questions and so on.
Yeah, I know that he submitted, obviously, the ordinance and supporting documents, I know our staff reviewed it, they looked into all the cases I think he cited, if I remember correctly. I know there was at least one conversation that Mr. Clark had with him to discuss it with him. I mean, obviously, there are different fields of law, his experience in environmental law, you know, but he doesn't have any experience, as far as I know, in municipal law. And so that's obviously an issue, and we know that there were two situations of communities, Allentown, I think, was one, and I forget the other one.
I don't have everything in front of me tonight, so I can't recall specifically, and I don't want to misspeak.
Sure.
They passed one in Baltimore, last spring, I think.
But it's a different, it's obviously a different state.
It's a state, I know. But still, they also don't work in Pennsylvania.
Right. Well, I know, I'm aware of that. But obviously, Baltimore, as you probably know, cities often are given more latitude to do things than other communities are.
No, I just think it would be to everybody's benefit to give it a little more thought and look at it some more.
Well, I mean, obviously, as Mr. Clark said, we do, we get, as supervisors, we get regular updates of laws that are pending in Harrisburg, laws that have passed in Harrisburg, court cases that have come out that deal with municipal law, everything from employment law to zoning to police, you know, matters, I mean, all of that, we get briefs on that as supervisors, monthly, really. And so there are things, and obviously, the solicitors get even more than we get, and more detail. So it is always something that you're always reviewing, making sure that our policies match with, just got passed, or some case that just got decided, we're always trying to do that, to make sure we're not running afoul of anything. And that's always ongoing, and continues to be. So...
Next time he's in town, would, if any of you were available, would you be willing to possibly meet with him and discuss this?
I'll let the rest of the board members speak.
You can come to an executive session, sure.
Okay. The other thing was, we previously requested that you consider changing the zoning in certain areas in Falls Township, from heavy industrial to light industrial or commercial. We realized that the zoning map in Falls is complicated, and somewhat of a patchwork of different variations within the industrial area, as seen the map. We request that the township make an effort to streamline and simplify the zoning where possible, and encourage making the local zoning laws more people and environmental-friendly, while still encouraging jobs. One suggestion would be to develop a people-friendly, multi-use, commercial waterfront area, built using the latest in green technology, for example. And I don't know if there's been any efforts or anything like that to work possibly with the county and other...
That was something, we did that over several years. In 2005, we did a riverfront district overlay that would have taken a lot of light industrial areas outside of what you think of as, oh, still on the river, but not in the industrial park, but right outside it, and rezoned that, or an overlay of that to encourage all kinds of development. And that was 13 years ago, and we're just now dealing with a company that's looking to do something, and that they're going to build a warehouse. So, you know, so that's, you know, we've done that, we've taken a look at Biles Island, which you're sure you're aware of, or a little bit familiar with, and we actually have a plan in place, or have a plan designed to do something with that at some point, should the township get access to the entire site, because Waste Management has agreed to sell that entire island to the township for the sum of a dollar, when they're finished using it. However, we don't know when that's going to be, and also, it's an area where the Army Corps has a license to dump dredging spoils. So, and we don't know when that ends. And so, there have been efforts in this township over more than a decade to do things...
Any chance of changing zoning at all?
We're not going to be, the problem with changing zoning is, it's not our property. We can't just go changing people's zoning, we'll get sued, and we'll lose. If they come to us and request zoning change, that's a different story.
Couldn't you do it, and then grandfather in, and like do some, I mean, I know there are ways to do it, it's got to be ways to do it.
Well, overlays are possible, but it's also something we're trying to work within the parameters of what we think is going to go down there. You understand, you're dealing with an area that is, the pollution level is incredibly high. As I mentioned to you, and I know in past meetings, the landfill that's currently operating, the one I'm accused of bringing here instead of jobs... By the way, one of the people running for office actually opened a business right next to that landfill area. I guess he left it out of his mailers against me. But that site had to be, it was $10 million to clean that site, so that it could be a landfill. I want to say that again. $10 million Waste Management had to spend to clean an area so that it could be a landfill. There aren't a whole lot of other businesses, a whole lot of businesses that have the money to come in and do that kind of cleanup. Not that every spot on that site is that polluted, but there are some that are worse. And so the idea that it's always going to be an industrial area, whether it's light industry, heavy industry, it's always going to be an industrial area, you know, it's just, it's never going to be anything else, it's just not possible.
In terms of looking at the long-range picture versus short-range picture...
No, I'm looking long-range, I live here, so I mean, I'm looking at that too, my children do too, so. All right, we do, you're well past your five minutes, Ms. Baxter.
Thanks.
Sorry. Sharon Furlong?
Sharon Furlong, Bucks Environmental Action, and congratulations to the two of you who ran successful races, and we applaud you. Thank you for that conversation, which depressed the hell out of me, and since I wrote this speech, I really have nothing else to say, so don't take it any personally, but since I wrote it, I am going to read it, and I will give it to you. But it is in support of a Clean Air Ordinance, and this would be another series of concerns as to why something like this, or something, some kissing cousin to this, might be important for places like Lower Bucks to be thinking about, because we have so few other options and so few warriors fighting for us. So allow me to read this, and again, take nothing personally. So here we are again, asking you to be in the forefront of community protection, of the quality of land, air, and water, indeed, the quality of life. We are living in times when we thought we had won the major battles over the trashing of our environment by industries who did so willy-nilly for scores of years, but no, this sadly is not true. Our federal government has now hired industry representatives as the gatekeepers of the very agencies, designed to stop egregious and flagrantly environmentally destructive actions. So it is left to the states and to local governments to create a bright and shining line in the sand beyond which we will not yield. We have a constitutional amendment in Pennsylvania that should help us, but shoulda, woulda, coulda, it just doesn't happen, and that might be something to consider when considering a Clean Air Ordinance. Again, that leaves you. Why can't we turn to Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection as an agency that will fight like the warriors we need for the health and safety of the citizens of Pennsylvania? Indeed, let me read a quote from the website of the DEP itself that should hearten all of us, and I quote, "The Department of Environmental Protection is charged with the responsibility for development of a balanced ecological system incorporating social, cultural, and economic needs of the Commonwealth through development and protection. The department is responsible for the state's land, air, and water management programs, all aspects of environmental protection, and the regulation of mining operations," end of quote. And besides, there is that constitutional amendment, right? Should be a slam dunk thing that the DEP would be standing on firm legal, as well as organizational and ethical grounds, to deny permits to projects that are brazen in the magnitude of the potential destruction of what they want to do in our backyards, on the edges of our schools, in community buildings, and in all of our lives. However, during the May 5th meeting at the Sheridan Hotel regarding Elcon, one employee of the DEP after another indicated to the packed house of citizens that their mandate does not allow them to take the cumulative reality of citing projects altogether in a single community. They stated categorically and frequently that they must only rule on individual projects, the project that is currently in front of them, where, in the quote I just read, is there anything written about DEP's mandated responsibility that allows for the fragmentation of the environmental, social, and cultural aspects of living into smaller parts? Where is it written that the reality of cumulative citing of projects is not a reality that needs to be heeded? Indeed, by its very nature, one cannot fragment protection, and one cannot fragment management of programs. It is all one. The air is the air, the water is the water, and the land is the land. And we live in the reality of multiple decisions, multiple buildings, multiple polluters, so why are they, quote, "not allowed," as they claim, to take this very reality into consideration? This is myopic, even irrational, thinking, and so one must question not only why, but from where does this originate? It is an obvious betrayal of how and why the DEP was created in the 1970s in the first place, and why this agency thinks that they are being true to their mandate is a complete and very dangerous mystery, and one we cannot solve. So now what? Answer: pass a Clean Air Ordinance. Make it the best that can be made, using the best legal minds, and then loudly support it. We will stand behind you. We'll be there with you when the lawyers who want to make their invasive clients happy and earn their exorbitant fees come calling. We will be with you when the courts get called in. We will rise up, so thank you for your consideration in this matter. May I approach and hand this to you?
Sure. Okay, those are all the names on the non-resident sign-in sheet. Any other non-residents wish to speak? Just one, go ahead. Just go ahead and state your name, please.
I'm Joe Hendershot.
I'm sorry, I have to do it.
Sorry, I didn't sign in.
Sorry.
You guys are my last stop, 300 miles driving today, so not good to impress. Long trip. So my name's Joe Hendershot, I'm from Conservation Motors of PA. So just so everyone knows, we're a statewide organization that advocates for clean policies, for the environment, so clean air, clean water, open spaces. And we really thank you all, I actually want to applaud you. You guys have maintained, throughout the past couple of months, especially with Elcon, an amazing ability to constantly take criticism and speech and just hear out your constituents, and we do really appreciate that, and we genuinely thank you for that. There are many townships who don't quite do that. I live over in Hamilton, we've had a crazy race over there, dealing with a lot of crazy stuff. But just to move forward, we've come out here in support of the Clean Air Ordinance. I think this group has been fighting for a really long time, and having to keep constituencies constantly going, we can nip it in the bud, is something that we should definitely be forward to. But there are many, many other, you know, issues. The American Lung Association, as we all know, 2019 issued bucks, failing grade, you know, more orange air quality days in Philadelphia. I mean, the asthma rates are about 10% in the area, so it's concerning. I mean, that's getting close to like Union City here in New York. So, helping keep our residents safe, we saw, especially at the schoolhouse meeting, people come out to protect themselves, they really do. They come out to vote, they come out to make speeches, they really are, you know, dedicated when it comes to like fearing for their safety and the environment and the stuff around them. And just finally, the gems that we have around here, like the environmental things, Abbott Marsh in Bristol Marsh, beautiful places, some of the only remaining freshwater marshlands on the Delaware River, tidal freshwater, sorry. And they're truly amazing pieces that we have to protect. Biles Island, right? Silver Lake, the mouth of the DNR Canal, these are all places that, in the second-most densely populated area along the Delaware River, you know, sort of Philly, are like open spaces that people go out and enjoy every single day. But thank you, guys, we do really appreciate it, hearing the concern of the constituency and us as well. But thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay. All right, we'll move on with our agenda. Thank you for those who came to speak. Item number two is a certificate of appropriateness for 93 Main Street. This is to install a whole-house generator. Mr. Gray?
Yes. As mentioned, this is for 93 Main Street. This has been reviewed and approved by the Harb Board. The applicant's name is Jeffrey Lazar. Or is that considered the certificate of appropriateness?
Okay. I don't see Mr. Lazar here. Comments or questions? I know they're doing a big citing project on this house.
No. No questions.
No, I have none.
Concerns, questions?
None.
No? Okay. Any public comment, concerns? Is there a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for 93 Main Street?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number two is another certificate of appropriateness for 65 Old Locust Avenue. This is for construction of a rear addition, to re-size the entire house. Mr. Gray?
Yes. The applicant's name is David Shoemaker. This project also has been reviewed and approved by the Harb Board. The Board is asked to consider this certificate of appropriateness.
Okay, Mr. Shoemaker is here. If anybody has any questions or concerns for him? Comments or questions?
I do not.
I don't. None.
No, no, there's been a lot of work done on this house recently, it really looks fantastic, so thank you for the work you're doing on it. Okay, any public comment? See no hands? Is there a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for 65 Old Locust?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Item four is proposed budget presentation authorization to advertise. We'll get some seating arrangements changed around, and our finance director, Ms. Rukoff, is coming to the, stepping to the microphone. Mr. Gray? You want to introduce this, or just...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Harvey. For the last few weeks, Mrs. Rukoff has been working very hard on preparing the 2020 preliminary budget. At this time, she's here to present this to the Board.
Yeah, the last one.
Other one, not that one. Come on, come on. You gotta go your clothes.
Make sure you move that microphone a little closer, Mr. Rukoff.
Please.
Was there presentations in the back for anybody that wanted them?
Yes, I believe there was.
There was, okay.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to present the proposed budget for... I'd like to present the proposed budget for 2020 for your review. The proposed tax rate for 2020 is 7.22 mils. The same rate as 2019. There is no tax increase proposed for Falls Township's residents. Seven tax funds make up the total millage rate charged to our township residents. The General Fund is the chief operating fund of the township. The Street Lighting Fund is used to account for the cost of electricity and maintenance of highway and streetlights located within the township. The Fire Protection Fund helps to support our local fire companies. The Fire Hydrant Fund is restricted to expenditures for the maintenance and repair of fire hydrants located within the township. The Parks and Recreation Fund is restricted to the development of recreational programs and our township parks. The Falsington Library Fund helps to support our local library, and the Rescue Squad Fund helps to support our local rescue squads. That brings us to our total millage rate of 7.22 mils. The millage distribution remains unchanged for 2020. For every tax dollar paid in 2019, less than four cents was received by Falls Township. The balance was collected by the County of Bucks and the Pensbury School District. Our residents' tax dollars are used to provide a full range of municipal services. These include police and fire protection, construction and maintenance of streets and storm sewers, recycling, residential solid waste pickup, zoning regulations, building inspections, parks and recreational activities, and the maintenance and replacement of streetlights. Contributions to our fire companies, rescue squads, the library that serves Falls Township residents are also funded through these real estate tax dollars. What do all of these services cost our taxpayers? Based on an assessment of $30,000, a Falls Township resident can expect to pay $216.60. This is by far the lowest cost of our neighboring municipalities. Please note, our neighboring municipalities' figures include assessments for trash and leaf pickups, which are free to Falls Township residents due to our partnership with Waste Some highlights of the 2020 proposed budget. Our 2020 projected revenues, which include reliance by the General Fund on host community fees of $16.8 million, reliance by the General Fund on resource recovery fees of $950,000, and additional projected revenues, including our local services tax at $660,000, cable-TV franchise fees at $700,000, real estate transfer taxes at $800,000, building, electrical, and fire permits at $795,000, and state pension system assistance at $700,000. Our 2020 pension obligation. While the state pension assistance the township receives has remained relatively static, as represented by the green line on the bottom of the chart, the township's minimum municipal obligation to the pension plan has risen dramatically. As shown by the red line, the township's pension obligation doubled from $1.3 million in 2012 to $2.6 million in 2017. For 2018 and 19, our pension obligation was over $2.8 million. For 2020, the township has budgeted $2,835,893. As you can see, the assistance we receive from the state does little to offset our rising pension costs. The net cost to the township is projected to be $2.1 million for 2020. Budgeted expenditures from the General Fund total $22,031,77. 54.6% of that amount, or $12.2 million, is used to provide police services to our community. Some 2020 proposed capital projects. The Township Road Program will continue in 2020. The construction and engineering for this project is budgeted at $3,956,300. The areas scheduled for reconstruction are Simon's Drive, Gilbert Drive, Elbow Lane, and the section of Burgess Manor. Our Public Works Department anticipates the completion of additional mill and overlay work on Center Street and the parking lot at Von Hoffman Park at a projected cost of $50,325 has been budgeted for improvements to the intersection of North Olds Boulevard and Trenton Road. The total project cost is anticipated to be $251,626. PennDOT will provide 80% of the funding through their Green Light Go Grant. There are currently many dead or dying trees in the community park, creating a hazardous situation for our park visitors. Many of our trees have been infested by the Emerald Ash Borer. We have budgeted $85,000 to continue the tree trimming and removal that we had begun in 2018. The Emerald Ash Borer is a highly destructive invasive species of beetle native to northeastern Asia. For more information on the Emerald Ash Borer and the damage it causes, please go to the township website, Parks and Recreation page. The purchase of vehicles, computer equipment, firearms training and supplies, and various other equipment for the Police Department has been budgeted at $470,000. And the Public Works Department is in need of a replacement vehicle and equipment. $275,960 has been budgeted for these purchases. A new playground to replace the 21-year-old unit currently at Kirby Park is budgeted at $99,922, and this new unit will include a wheelchair accessible ramp. Based on the proposed budget, a total of $32,752,841 is projected to be spent in the year The budget schedule for 2020 includes tonight's discussion of the budget, advertisement of the 2020 budget on November 24, additional budget discussions from November 19 through the December 17, public inspection of the proposed budget from November 26 to December 16, and adoption of the 2020 budget at the December 17 Board of Supervisors meeting. And that concludes our presentation of the 2020 proposed budget. Shout out to two of our township residents for their photos. The opening and closing photos on this evening's slideshow are submissions to the Parks and Recreation Fall Photo Contest by Township Residents Pam Kennedy and Linda Bogard. If there's any questions on budget, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Comments or questions from board members? Mr. Baraski?
No, I thought you were really...
No, we'll do the board members first, then we'll do the public. We'll do public, Mr. Mariani. Don't worry, I know, I see you.
I just have one question for now. I was curious about the Fire Hydrant Fund and what that goes towards.
Repair and maintenance of fire hydrants within the township.
Is that the reason? Because I see TOFA employees out. That's the only person I've ever seen replace the hydrant, so...
We make payments to them.
For the repairs? They bill us for them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So what happens if it exceeds? Like, how does that work? Do they, do they know what we're budgeted for to repair, what they can repair?
No, we've never gone over...
I don't know. Like, it's a fixed amount, so I didn't, I didn't know.
Yeah, I don't ever recall going over. We've never had a fund balance problem in the past.
Yeah, the amount has fluctuated in the past, and we budget based on what that has been estimated at historically. But the millage rate is set. Yes, we get a set amount each year, and if we spend less, we accumulate a fund balance and roll it forward, and...
Do you know what that is, or...
Yes. The current fund balance, sorry, in the Fire Hydrant Fund is 100, well, projected to be at the end of 2019, $104,331.
Okay.
And then at the end of 2020, if we spend, as we have been in the past, we're looking to have a fund balance of $130,360. And we keep that rolling fund balance so that should a larger expense come up, we have the funds to pay for it.
Okay.
And that money can't be used for anything other than...
It cannot be used for anything else.
That's my, that was kind of like my follow-up question. I mean, not for now. I'd like to learn a little more about it, but it just seems like it's, there's places that are really in need, and it's unfortunate that we have this balance growing and the library struggling. You know, they're begging for help.
Right. When those taxes are set, they are restricted just for that purpose. So we can't use money, when I explained about the seven tax funds that support...
Yeah, I understand we can't use it, I'm just, I don't agree with you, that's all.
We can't transfer it over.
Okay.
Thanks.
Is that, just piggybacking, is that millage rate for something like the Fire Hydrant Fund, is that set by voters? Is that a referendum issue? Is it state-mandated, or...
We set the amount up to any amount that we're capped at by the Second Class Township Code. We can set it. So if we wanted to keep our millage at 7.22 in total, and we didn't need so much millage in one fund, we could use some in another fund. We can do that.
But once it's collected, it can't be used for anything else?
Correct. Once it's collected, it can't be used for something else. But, you know, if we wanted to change the distribution of the millage that we're collecting, we can do that.
So it's possible something we can look at for next year?
Yes.
Switch the millage from Fire Hydrant Fund to Library Fund?
Yes. When we're having our budget discussions, certainly.
Yeah, we can address that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Dent?
No, I have no questions.
Mr. Rocco?
I have none, thank you.
Mr. Galloway?
None.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much, appreciate that. So on one hand, interested in speaking, is there a motion to open public comment?
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mariani? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the next meeting, the last meeting that you'll be here, Mr. Chairman?
December, yes. Mm-hmm, yes.
The budget. Now, the budget is the most important managerial tool available to government. We all agree with that. It establishes policy, and it's the financial method by which policy decisions are made and implemented. Now, I want this Board to consider implementing a couple of my proposals. And since we've discussed some of them that I'm going to bring up in the past, and in the interest of time, I don't see any need to enter into each one in detail unless you have a question about it. I'd rather just move right through it and have you folks consider it. And I'll start with hostess fees. They continue to be the major source of funding for our budgets. And again, I'll tell you, normal operating expenses should be supported solely by taxes, because this reminds taxpayers of the real cost of what government is, and it acts as a restraint on unnecessary spending. This is especially true when it comes to townships and boroughs. I'm asking the Board to expand our tax base and move away from host fees. And I still believe long-term commitments based on host fees, that's a very risky way to do business. Use the host fees to establish a personal and perpetual income return to the taxpayers every year. You want to use it that way, fine, if it goes away, no problems. Healthcare. Available family premiums have increased 22% since 2014. That's a bounce. Now, the Kaiser Foundation reports that annual premiums for employers sponsor family health coverage reached over $20,576. That's up 5% from last year, last year, 5% from the previous year, and the workers are contributing $6,015 toward that cost. Single coverage, $7,000, a little bit more. I ask our chairman, our manager, what is our cost per enrolled family premium?
Annually, it is 40, approximately $45,000.
$45,000.
42, excuse me, 42,000.
42, thank you.
By the way, that's a drop. That's dropped significantly over the past...
Well, I've been after you for 15 years to do this.
Well, we've been working on it for years to get it to drop, and we did drop it significantly over the past year or so.
A little bit more. What's the employee contribution?
Zero.
Zero. Okay. So it seems to be our costs continue to be, even though they're better, well beyond industry and reasonable standards, okay? And they continue to be, I believe, out of control. That's twice what's going on out there. Now, I'd like to see the township change the employment system and the standards in this township. Employee salaries, I believe, should be based on qualifications, skills, experience, and the performance against the job description, not on seniority and longevity. Employee earnings should not be hindered by time and grade. So I believe the employees want, and they deserve, this kind of an employment system. I'd like to see us change that. The pension fund, which she mentioned tonight, the pension obligation continues to rise sharply. The township should employ a controlled formula to ensure the township will not match more than 3% of an employee salary forever. Get the pension thing under control. The last two things that are, that are close to me is the township complex. Now, I believe this Board should begin a feasibility, a feasibility study on the necessary renovation of this building. Again, I'll say it, most buildings are renovated, they're remodeled, they're modernized to conform and to accommodate whatever our needs happen to be. They are not torn down and rebuilt as some people would like to see happen to this building. Why, I don't know. To renovate this building is a doable project. The cost can be financed and paid well within our resources, and I believe it'd be a wise allocation. The last proposal I have, you should have seen it coming.
I saw it coming.
No, the leaves, no.
No?
I'm gonna let that, I'm gonna let that go this year.
I saw you look at me when they brought it up.
And I laughed, because I know I'll never get that. But it's the EIT. Now, I know, did you know that Bucks County towns this year earned over $80 million from an EIT test? Bucks County, just the townships of Bucks County, hello. The year before that, I think it was '79. We contributed, I believe, $3 to $4 million to that. We got back zero, okay? Now, I gave this Board before a copy of the official rates of the EIT, PIT, LST of every municipality in Bucks County. And Ms. Rukoff got a, got a copy of that tonight. The copy I gave her was the rate as of June 15, 2019, right up to date. So based on the range of revenue estimates that I saw, we are subsidizing other townships between $3 and $4 million. I believe that. That revenue belongs to Falls Township, so I'm asking this Board, please, review the facts, take this opportunity to expand our tax base, and get us back on track. the facts, take this opportunity to expand our tax base, and get us back on track. That's our money. And I want to thank you for having the opportunity to adjust the budget this evening. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments. As you know, we have looked a couple times at the EIT. And the issue simply is, because I mean, I pay it, you know, where I work at Bristol Township.
Paid it all my life.
And I probably pay somewhere near a four to five times in taxes at Bristol Township what I pay here at Falls Township taxes because of the EIT.
Same as Philadelphia.
No, I know. I mean, the studies we've done, the reviews we've done, and it's been a couple of years, I guess, since we've done them. But, the reviews we've done have shown that the majority of Falls Township people, people who work, who are of working age, who are employed, like myself, and, you know, are working in places where there isn't a current EIT. You're right that if it were anything above fifty percent of the people in Falls paying it somewhere else, it would make sense for us to do it here, because then your money comes here. But, if it's only thirty or forty percent, now you're talking about a tax increase for some-
No, no, no. It isn't. The eConsult Solutions was the last ones that were used here.
Right.
Okay? And they found that the number of Falls residents, this is before other townships got into it, okay, paying an EIT increased from twenty percent to forty-eight percent.
Okay.
That was from our last study.
Okay.
I'm telling you that I'll bet we're over forty-eight percent.
Probably are.
You know, and it's, it's a tax that a lot of people, as you well know, and I know, because I'm in my eighties.
Mm-hmm.
I retired in January. Okay? Most people who pay it don't know they're paying it. It's as simple as that. And if you're going to pay it to Bristol Township, as I did in Philadelphia, as a matter of fact, when I was in Philadelphia, I used to do everything I possibly could outside of my office, because I didn't have to pay the tax when I was not in the city. So, every time I had a meeting, I'd move it up to Bucks County.
I'm not sure you should have said that on record. But, you know, there are cameras rolling right now, so I'm not sure.
But, I'd say, I'd say we're over fifty percent. And these people are going to pay it, and they're just going to pay it to another township. Let's bring it into our township, use the money, renovate this building, and we'll all be happy.
Okay.
And by the way, do the right thing when you get out there. And I know you will. And don't forget-
My best.
I'll leave you with this. Hell has no exits. So, no exit doors in hell. Do the right thing. You'll be all right.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Wow.
After what he's sat through, I think it's only up.
Not that you had a leaf truck here, you-
Any other people wish to speak? I see no hands. There a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, did you?
Surprise, I'm not going to have it here yet.
Okay. If there's no more comments or questions, Mr. Boraski brought up the issue of the fire hydrant fund, and we're asking our professionals to take a look. Ms. Rukoff, I see with her nose in a book right now. It doesn't look like fun reading.
Riveting.
Riveting. To see if it's possible to possibly shift some of that funding from the fire hydrant fund to the library fund. And so, we're not really sure we can do that at this moment, but we think we're good advertising this, and if we can, might be able to make a change in the future.
Yes, you can do one of two things. You can-
Make sure you get the microphone.
You can make a motion to advertise as amended, and then-
If we can't do it, then we just don't.
If we can't do it, then we'll just, we'll just advertise it as it is written. And what we could do is have Mr. Gray in my office report back to all of you. We're not going to advertise until the weekend.
Sunday.
Sunday, anyway.
We advertise, and it'll go in Sunday, so.
So, it gives us a day, it gives us tomorrow to figure out whether or not we can do that.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
For me, Clark?
We can do it tomorrow.
Okay. All right.
We're saying we're Friday. Did I say Friday? No, today's only Tuesday, I said. Yeah, we can, we can, we can get you an answer tomorrow.
It sounds-
That sounds good.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion, then, to advertise the authorization of the amended two thousand twenty proposed budget?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, number five, and consider a proposal from Remington Vernick Engineers for the PennDOT Green Light Go grant. Just heard about this in our budget. Believe, Mr. Gray, you can introduce this?
Yes, thank you. The township received a proposal from Mr. Chris Fazio at RVE for engineering services, specifically a grant application to PennDOT for a green light go application. This would be at the intersection of North Olds Boulevard and Trenton Road. They would complete the application and subsequently submit it to PennDOT by the deadline of January tenth. The cost is not to exceed amount of two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. The board has asked to consider this proposal. In addition, Mr. Derek Kennedy from RVE, he is here for any questions.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy, just give us a brief idea of what kind of updates or upgrades we're talking about at this intersection. And this is North Olds and Trenton. Sorry.
Correct. So, it would be essentially a complete rebuild of the signalized intersection. It would include ADA improvements, pedestrian crosswalks, push buttons, new head signal heads out there. Now, the grant process, it is competitive, and we think that intersection is a good application. There's some safety-related improvements we can make that would help score higher. It has post-mounted signal heads. We would go overhead with masked arms. It's a proven safety, you know, mitigation measure there. And the signal runs on a pre-timed timing pattern. So, we would introduce detection, so it would have some flexibility to optimize itself, you know, depending on traffic conditions. So, another reason why it should score higher in PennDOT's system. So, we think it's the right intersection, you know, to go ahead with, for the grant application.
Do we have emergency preemption on that intersection?
I don't think we do, no.
I don't think we do, no. Okay.
But, yeah, with the overhead, you could do that.
Right. Okay. Sorry, jumping in there. Mr. Gallaway, comments, questions?
Uh, no questions.
I'm sorry if I didn't hear you, but did you talk about signage or lane striping or paving? Because I drove through there today to look at this before our meeting, and even the, you know, the road, the road's in bad shape to begin with. But, you know, it's kind of like confusing, because there's a turn lane, but it's not really marked, and then people try to ride the shoulder to go around other people. So, I didn't know if we were going to try to clean it up.
It would include new signing and striping with it. So, would, especially with the new crosswalks, they may get relocated, because we'd have to do ramps, and that would kind of domino effect. So, we'd have to move back, you know, the markings and things like that. So, it would have a new signing, striping plan with the signal improvements as well.
We can always have our regards to restart, restart the area, right?
Yeah.
Well, it's a state road.
Oh, it's a state road. Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep, thanks.
Mr. Ditz?
No.
Mr. Rocco?
No.
Okay. Is there a public comment? See no hands. All right, so this is just authorizing the engineering services for this, and the amount, again, not to exceed two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Is there a motion to that?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Pullen?
Mr. Gallaway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Ditz?
Yes.
Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Appreciate your patience. All right, item number six, consider a quote from third-party administrator for medical reimbursement process. Okay. Mr. Gray?
Yes, Vaughn Insurance has secured a proposal from the Harrison Group to administer the medical reimbursement process currently handled by our in-house human resource coordination, coordinator for our township employees. Initial cost for this is three hundred and fifty dollars, and the monthly cost per employee is five dollars per employee participating in the health insurance plan with the township. Board has asked to consider this. At this time also, Ms. Anne Smith and Sherry McGovern are here for any questions the board may have.
Okay. Ms. Smith, can you just give us an idea of the basics of how this would work, and how it's different from what we're doing right now? I see Ms. McGovern behind you there, too. She can always chip in if she wants to.
Well, the, the operation really wouldn't be much different than what, what's happening now with the reimbursement plan. All of the parameters that set up, that are set up between the two plans and what's been promised to the employees in the reimbursement plan would be the same. The Harrison Group would administer that plan for, you know, on behalf of the township. They're, they are HIPAA-certified with thirty years' experience. They can do this online, by email, by mobile application. They would provide also the daily and monthly reporting to the township as far as reimbursements are concerned, and what's, what's available as far as data reporting. They would accomplish the reimbursements to the employees either by direct deposit or by check twice a month, a week after the fifteenth and the last day of the month, which is a little different, I think, than what we're doing now. The employees would be able to monitor their claims very easily through either on their online account or through a mobile application. Additionally, the township would be assigned a dedicated account manager, someone who they can contact if they have questions, concerns about their reimbursements. And that person would also, would be available not only to employees but to management. The, one of the reasons I would advocate for the Harrison Group to over another third-party administrator is that in our experience in dealing with these people, when you call the Harrison Group, you get a person. And there's no menu, you know, phone menu. When you, if you're calling IBC, anybody who's ever called knows you, you can be on the phone for, you know, five or ten minutes just pushing buttons before you actually talk to a person. But, every day between eight-thirty and five, Monday through Friday, you'll get a person there to answer your question.
Okay.
You know, they have, they have a tremendous amount of experience. They deal with the public sector, as well as private sector businesses, helping them administer their benefit plans. In addition to the reimbursement plan, you know, they can also do the nondiscriminatory testing on the cafeteria plans, do forms filing and the ACA reporting as well.
Okay. All right. Comments or questions for Ms. Smith or Ms. McGovern?
None. No, thanks.
Yeah, I had one question. I think we, if a certain dollar amount out of pocket, I think we allow our employees now to have an expedited reimbursement. Is that true?
Yes, that's true. I think it's a thousand dollars.
A thousand dollars? Yeah.
Yes.
So, will Harrison-
Yes, they, we can accomplish that. What we can, what we'll do is, and part of what they, they do initially is set up a plan document that will enumerate everything that the township would like to have reimbursed, and how they want it reimbursed. So, we'll sit down with Sherry and Mr. Gray and Rich Miller at the Harrison Group, and set up those plan documents that they match your wishes.
Okay. Because you mentioned there was going to be two reimbursements a month. And there also could be this one for expedited reimbursement?
Yes, that can be accomplished.
Do you know, how does the mobile app work? Do they take a picture of the receipt?
Yes.
Okay, cool. All right. Now, that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Comments, questions from the public? See no hands. Okay. Yeah, this has been for quite a while. We've been sort of working on this, as Mr. Mariani talked about. The efforts the township has made over several years now to sort of try and keep healthcare costs down. And obviously, working through the different contracts we've had with the different bargaining units of employees here at the township. That's been a process we've had to go through with each bargaining unit, and it's taken, obviously, several years to get there. But, this is, this is a piece of that way of moving to a plan that was less expensive for the township. You know, add a few extra dollars in fees to employees, but by reimbursing them, you know, the township is still saving quite a bit of money. I know, Mr. Gray, periodically, you'll give me an update in terms of how much money we've saved. I know I'm hitting you cold on this. You have a rough idea of what we've saved?
To date, since about the last eighteen months, over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah. So, we've saved about a quarter million dollars, a little bit more than a quarter million dollars in the past year and a half by moving to a less expensive plan. And so, you know, paying fees here, three hundred and fifty dollars set up, and then five dollars per person, per month, per employee is a relatively small amount in terms of moving to this, and also easier for our staff instead of having to deal with the constant flow of receipts that come in. Because you have to remember, it's not just individual employees. It could be their kids, it could be their spouses. It's all of that is, could be coming in for over a hundred employees. So, yeah, I think it's, I appreciate all the work that's been done by Vaughn and our staff in getting all this ready. So, thank you for that work. Any other comments or questions?
No.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion, then, to enter into an agreement with Harrison Group for reimbursement services or administration services using the fee schedule in the September nineteenth packet, or September twenty nineteen packet that we were provided?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, item seven, consider reauthorizing for advertisement the heating and air conditioning replacement project for the police department. Mr. Gray?
On Thursday, November fourteenth, there was a scheduled bid opening for a new heating and air conditioning unit in the police department. No bids were received at that time. The board has asked to consider reauthorizing advertisement for a heating and air conditioning unit for the police department.
Okay. Seems pretty straightforward. Comments or questions?
None.
Is there a motion to reauthorize?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item eight, consider authorization advertised ordinance amending chapter one eighty-four sewers and water to add article twelve, inspection and replacement of private sewer service laterals. Ms. Gallagher, you've worked a lot on this.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. As the board will recall, over the last several years, the township and Remington and Vernick have worked closely with DEP and TOFA to amend the township's Act five thirty-seven plan. This was largely driven with, through an agreement that was reached between Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority and DEP regarding the Nishamani Interceptor, which required all contributing municipalities to update their Act five thirty-seven plans. Part of the mandate that was given to the township was to implement a lateral connection or lateral inspection ordinance, which is what this ordinance is. The DEP approved the township's Act five thirty-seven update last year, and the township had committed to implementing this in the fourth quarter of two thousand and nineteen. So, that's what this is.
Okay. All right, so this would apply to everybody in the township?
Correct.
Or just the, okay.
This is the entire township. The DEP required that it be township one.
As long as, if they have public sewer.
If they have public sewer, correct.
Right.
And I don't remember what the percentage is in the township that is publicly seared, but is large. Pretty high.
It's pretty high.
Yeah, it's pretty close to everybody, yeah.
I think we met everybody who has a, yeah.
We heard from everyone else.
Septic tank system. I think we met all those people last year.
Bristol Township recently passed a similar ordinance, lower makefield authorized advertising of a similar ordinance last week. So, this is something that all of the, and North Hampton Township has one passed already.
Okay. Comments or questions for Ms. Gallagher?
None.
No.
Yeah, so what, does this process, they have to go in there with a camera, inspect? Well, there's a few things, right? But, that would be one, to inspect the lateral?
That's essentially it. This is for the transfer of any property to township. It requires them to get a video inspection of any lateral connection to the public sewer. If there are defects down there, required to be corrected before the transfer goes through.
Is this their template that we used?
Yes. We did-
One of the things I was a little surprised, and what six inches on the mushroom meant? It's pretty high off the ground, I think.
Yes, that was, I believe that was from the model ordinance, and that was something that we worked with township staff to make sure was consistent with what, what has been required when laterals are replaced. So, that's something that's required for new laterals that go in.
And laterals, between the main sewer and the house, where they connect?
Correct. It's, it looks like a mushroom sticking out of the, out of the front yard. It's for purposes of being able to clean out and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I mean, I have to say I'm not happy about this, but it's something that we have to do, because it's going to, you know, our residents are going to incur costs, obviously.
One of the exceptions that we did carve into the model ordinance was an exception if the- if the lateral inspection had been clean within the prior six months. In talking to township staff, there have been quite a few property flips over the last several years, so this way, if someone comes in, gets a lateral replaced, they don't have to go get another inspection within the next six months.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, it's interesting, because I did have a complaint recently from a gentleman in, I think, Elderberry. I think I just talked to Mr. Jones about it, who, who, he wasn't a new resident, he had lived there for, for quite a while, but, you know, his lateral went. And it was, he was, I think, a corner property, so it wasn't just a standard distance to the street, to the main, it was all, it was a good chunk of distance, and because of elevation, there was a considerable drop. And so he had to, he had to have a crew come out, and it was a tremendous amount of money that, you know, they had to dig down about 12 feet just to get to it. You know, and this is obviously designed to prevent, you know, somebody buys a house and you hire an inspector, of course, the inspector looks for all the standard things, and we send people out to do a visual inspection to look for standard things, but if, if a lateral goes, and in a community with a lot of aging properties, you know, that it could be a bigger problem, you know, in the future. If a lateral goes, for someone who just purchased a house, maybe their first house, which is a realistic thing, and when you think about Levittown and Frails Hills, a young couple that starts out buying their first home, now all of a sudden they have a lateral that to replace, they didn't know was bad, and that's obviously, this is designed to, I guess, protect them. Do we have an idea roughly what the cost would be for someone to hire, hire a plumbing company? And, and also, Mr. Jones, is this, I'm assuming there are quite a few companies do this work?
Yeah, there would be plenty of companies that are available to do the work, plumbing companies. I don't believe it's going to be that expensive to do the inspection and camera the, the actual lateral. I think it'd be in the hundreds, not the thousands. And I do believe that the gentleman you mentioned, I think, was on the hook for something, $28,000 to fix that lateral.
Yeah, so, okay.
And this is to prevent water from getting into the sewer?
Correct.
And has to be pumped out?
Yeah, it's inflow and infiltration that ends up in the public sanitary, which then has to be treated, and DEP is trying to prevent, but it also serves as protection for individuals buying a property, so it doesn't cause backups in their people's houses.
And it could, you know, it could prevent even, you know, like you said, tree roots are starting to get into a pipe, and you want to find that out sooner rather than later.
Certainly.
Yeah, because those pipes in Levittown, weren't they, they weren't?
1950s?
Yeah, and they were, they weren't made out of metal, right? They were?
What, are they, are they terracotta? Yeah, they're, yeah.
Yeah, they're clay, yeah.
Must have been replaced, I'm suspect.
Yeah, I'd imagine so.
So, hey, but when was that? It could have been 20, 30 years ago.
1982, I recall.
So, any other, any public comment? This is just advertising. Motion to open public comment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Mr. Moore? We're just opening public comment. Yeah.
I find it interesting, one of my biggest concerns about that is I had to replace three sewer lines already in three different properties, and it's not an inexpensive proposition. And I would think it's going to be a major impediment to selling a property if I have to go through and replace that and spend 15, $20,000 to replace a sewer, not only over and above the cost of having the inspection done. So it's going to really be an interesting period of time to deal with that, when you put the burden of replacing a sewer on the seller of a property. When I bought my property, there was still orangeberg pipe in the ground, and nobody inspected that or gave me any heads up, other than I knew my father had suffered a sewer collapse. And, and that was a pretty interesting affair, since we couldn't do anything in the house until the sewer was replaced, and that was thousands of dollars back in the 60s. So I think it's interesting, I, I think you have to look at the thing and its total effect, because we had sewer lines in, and we don't have a six-inch mushroom cap on top of our, our cleanouts either. In fact, in one of the properties, they left the cleanout under, almost underground, so you have to go out and shovel it off, because that wasn't the standard at the time. So now I'm going to have to incur cost to replace the cleanout that was not installed properly to begin with. So I'm just concerned about the cost of the individual homeowners in the township already dealing with these issues, and, you know, I've already gone through replacement, I have cast iron pipe everywhere, and I can't control root infiltration or leakage or any of the other things, seismic events that may affect the sewer line, that's well beyond my control. But you're going to put the burden of the expensive replacement on the seller of the property now, which is another impediment to unload the property. I'm getting old, and I'm probably going to end up moving, and I don't think I could really incur a burden of replacing another, or you're spending 20 or $25,000 to replace the sewer line before I depart.
Well, we also have to think of, you know, anytime, we've all bought houses and sold houses, most likely, you know, at least once or twice, and you have an inspector go out and he says, well, this roof has to be replaced, or there's water damage here, and, and those are things that have to be fixed too. This is just another, and it's one of the things, at least you could see a roof that's bad, for the most part, you can see water damage, you can see if the side wall's going to be ripped up.
Well, a lot of those things, you can have cottosels in the sales agreement that would preempt you from having to replace that with a reduction in the sale of the property to make some, you know, some compensation to the buyer of the property. And this, in this essence here, that's not going to be the case. You're not going to be negotiating with the?
Yeah, I think there is verb, there is some.
Yeah, the parties can certainly negotiate.
Yeah, they can negotiate.
Okay, all right.
And this isn't something we want, we want to do.
I understand.
This was in agreement with DEP, they required.
Well, I understand, look, me and the DEP don't see eye to eye on a lot of things.
Right, right, right.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Everybody did this with oil tanks like 15 years ago, you had to have the ground inspected, and everybody in Levittown has an above-ground oil tank now, you know? I bought my house and sold it three years later, and all of a sudden I had to move the oil tank.
Yep. I'm aware of that, believe.
All right, any other comments? Is there a motion to close public comment?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, this is just authorizing advertising. Is there a motion to authorize advertisement of this proposed ordinance?
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, item nine, minutes. Any comments, suggestions, corrections for the October 15th minutes?
I wasn't at the meeting, but I did watch the video, and excellent minutes, as always, Mr. Gray.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Did we get three ayes on that?
Aye, I'm sorry.
Okay. Engineers report, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The October engineers report shows that there were two applications submitted during the month of October. One was for earth disturbance approval for an in-ground pool. The second is a land development application for a building addition at the Trucksmore on Lincoln Highway. Notable updates to the land development, the ongoing land development project, projects are as follows. Premium excavating, that's the project on Canal Road that's finally finished, I believe that was submitted in 2014. It took a while to get to the finish line, but they have, and our inspector has signed off on the improvements. The St. Joe's project is on schedule for completion by the end of the year. They are now working inside the apartment buildings. Most of the site improvements are complete, the lights are up. They may not be all energized, but they're, they're functional. So that project, we expect to be completed on time by the end of the year. The Kelly Pipe Project, that's a project on Towpath Road that had a malfunctioning stormwater management facility. If you've read the last reports, that basin has been fixed and remediated successfully by the contractor, and, and looks good, is in good shape. We're actually going to ask the folks at the Dollar General, who also have malfunctioning detention basin problems, to follow that course of action. Essentially, they took the top 18 inches of material out of the basin, it was overcompacted during construction, and they found better infiltration layers below, put amended soil in, and now it works. The Patient First Project is scheduled for opening on October 21st.
November, right?
November, I'm sorry. My apologies, November 21st, two days from now. The Campy Components Project is now under construction, that's a building addition, again down on Towpath Road, right across from the Kelly Pipe Project. The Solvay Project in the Riverfront District, that was a regular subdivision, a regular-shaped lot and a proposed subdivision, and there were some zoning issues with that, and the applicant has informed us that they're going to delay the submission until they can submit the accompanying land development for the residual property, which will support the irregular-shaped lot that, that, you know, that will cause a lot of questions when it becomes before the board. So we expect that to be submitted in the near future, maybe next month, maybe next year early, but the engineering, I was told, is, is pretty well-advanced, so it should be pretty quick. And the Trucksmore Project is, as I said, it's a 5,000-square-foot building addition to their existing facility on Old Lincoln Highway, and we've identified a couple of zoning issues that they have to work out before they can come to the board, but they may be successful in getting to the zoning hearing board in December and then to the planning commission later on. There are no real notable updates to the earth disturbances, they're in various shape with, with respect to either being reviewed or being under construction or being complete. In terms of the township projects, the Quaker Penn docks are going to be removed tomorrow. They're going to be removed by the contractor who manufactured them, and he's going to identify any improvements that have to be made. There are some minor repairs that have to be done during the course of the winter, so we're, we're happy that he's on board and taking them out, and he's going to identify them and, and give us a proposal for the repairs, for the repair work. The 2018 road program is complete, as you know, and we're happy to report that it came in with the final payout, which will be part of the manager's report later on, under contract by $100,000. I drove out there over the last couple of days, and we're pretty happy with the result, and, and the grass looks pretty good. We had an issue with the grass, as you'll recall, a couple of months ago. And the 2019 road program is ongoing. We had a pre-construction meeting on Friday, they are in the process of removing trees. They have to work with PICO because there's some power lines that are intertwined with the branches, so they want them safe and de-energized, but they are working on the ones that are available to them, that won't delay the project. PICO's going to come out within a week or so to help them get through that. We are on schedule to have a resident meeting for the second section of Hedrow Woods for the next year's construction. That will be either the la, next week or the first week of December, but we will notify the board of that night and invite you to attend. We had a really good turnout last time, and we think it was a pretty successful meeting, and we intend to do that again for the second half of Hedrow Woods, and then yet another time for the Burgess Manor section, and that'll probably be mid-January at the latest. And our design is on target for going out to bid on that portion for early spring start of construction.
Okay, all right, thank you. Comments or questions for Mr. Jones?
No questions. None.
No.
I just have one, it's about St. Joe's Court.
Yes.
I think I asked a few months ago about the water in the basin.
Yes.
Has that been, has anything needed to be done there?
They're rain gardens, and they will ultimately drain. I think we're not seeing the vegetation grow, and once the wetland vegetation grows, then you won't see the, the standing water, but it's, it's designed to have a little layer of water in the bottom.
All right, okay, thanks. That's all I have, thank you.
I think, I apologize if I missed it, the OpEx Steakhouse, I think, opened today, is that right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it opened yesterday, I believe, and, and I drove, when I left the office last night, it was, it was packed around 7:30, so.
Good, good. I think Mr. Clark was going to bring every, I think after this meeting, was going to, all of us are just going to go there, Mr. Clark's picking up the tab, I think, so.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Lumen onions for everyone.
So, all right, good, it's a good addition. Okay, no more comments or questions, is there a motion to accept the engineers report?
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye. Bill list, bill this month, bills this month in the amount of $2,831,221.37. Of that 2.8 million, about $100,000 is either state money or escrow fund. There's about $113,000 in money, tax dollars, going to the rescue squads and fire companies. There is a total of about 1.9 million for salaries and benefits, $133,000 for the road program. So just those couple items, state money, money going to the emergency services, salaries, benefits, the road program, and escrow money from developers is about 2.2 million, a little over 2.2 million of the 2.8. So that's kind of where we are. Comments or questions for Mr. Gray?
None.
Is there a motion to pay the bills, as presented November 19th, 2019?
So moved.
So down. Mrs. Bowlen?
Mr. Gallaway?
Yes.
Mr. Bransky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dins?
Yes.
Mr. Rockham?
Yes.
Okay, we had an executive session beforehand, we've kind of had to, we left it halfway through, but I should have gone beginning of the meeting to Mr. Clark or Ms. Gallagher to give us just a sort of briefing on what we did in the executive session.
Yes, Mr. Harvey, during the executive session, the board discussed a matter involving collective bargaining. The board discussed various personnel matters and several matters involving potential litigation.
All right, thank you. Police Department report, Chief in the back.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Tonight, our conversation is going to settle, settle upon our accreditation, our onsite accreditation, which took place on 6th and 7th. With me tonight, I have Brian White, who is our accreditation manager. Any questions you have tonight, Brian is the guru that asks them. His team consisted of Mrs. Gina Seiler, Officer Nick Philpe, Corporal Mike Wolverton, Officer George Thomas, Corporal Mike Callahan, Officer Francisco Omedo, Officer Alex Sansone, and Corporal Dave Arons. Gentlemen, these guys worked tirelessly. They did a fabulous, fabulous job. This afternoon, I received the law enforcement accred, from the Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission, the assessment team report. I'll make sure that each and every one of you have a copy of this tomorrow. To say that it went smooth is an understatement, it went very, very good, only because of the tireless work that Brian and his staff put in. They put in a lot of hours, and he did a fabulous job. The three people that came out and did our onsite was Mike Mastriani, former Penn Township retired chief, Greg Budman, corporal from the Capitol Police, and Officer Jennifer Regeri from the Newtown Township Police Department out in Delaware County. They were fabulous, they worked with us, it was, it was very, very smooth. And to sum up this whole thing, I want to read the last line from this, from, "Recommend: Following a review of the operation of the Falls Township Police Department and required plea act files, it is without reservation that the assessment team recommends that Falls Town should be granted full accreditation status at the next meeting of the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission." On Thursday morning at 10:30, both Brian and I are going out to Harrisburg, they will vote on it, but after you read this report tomorrow, I'm sure that we're going to be re-accredited, and it's only because of their hard work, and everybody in the police department, everybody really did a bang-up job, and they did, you should be very proud of them. Any questions? I'll make sure that you have a copy of the letter, the letter I received and a copy of this tomorrow for everybody.
Comments or questions for the chief?
None.
No? No, thank you. Sergeant, thank you very much for your work and for your team, please pass on our thanks to them.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, manager comment?
Yes, just a few items tonight. I have several escrow releases for the board consideration. First one is Mercer Court on Lincoln Highway, escrow release amount is $332,317.96. This is a letter of credit, this is release number nine for Mercer Court. Patient First, located at 100 Lincoln Highway, $121,579.7. This also is a letter of credit, and this is release number two. Also, we have a cash escrow for Rock of Cashell II LLC, located at 8 Progress Drive. The cash escrow amount is $34,860.49. Board has asked, consider these escrow releases.
Okay, comments or questions regarding the escrow releases?
No.
Go ahead.
Just regarding Mercer Court, is, is there still more?
Hundred percent done.
This is it?
That's it.
Okay.
For some reason, they didn't, Mr. Bransky, for some reason, they, they left some money, I believe, in escrow, they'd been done for quite some time, and they actually came out of their maintenance period, but just didn't ask for the final release.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sure. Okay, sure. Any comments or questions from the public? See no hands. Is there a motion to authorize payment of all three of these escrow releases?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Bullen?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Bransky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dins?
Yes.
Mr. Rockham?
Yes.
Finally, I'd like to announce several businesses that opened during the month of October in Falls Township. They include Shaping Tomorrow Child Care Services located at 515 South Olds Boulevard, Suite 200, Endeavor Consulting Group, 333 North Oxford Valley Road, Suite 400 in Frails Hills, Music Together located at 85 Makefield Road, Suite 14 in Morrisville, and finally, Titan Technology located at 8 Headley Place, Suite B, Fallsington, PA. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, board comment, Mr. Rockham?
Just real quick, I'd like to congratulate you, Mr. Harvey, on your election, and you, Mr. Brasky, on your election, so obviously, we have one more meeting before you you move on, Mr. Harvey, but it should be interesting up here. But congrats.
Thank you.
And enjoy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, might I just, just to.
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
Rock, I say congratulations to both of you. I know how hard Mr. Harvey worked over the past year, and I don't think anyone's ever worked as hard, deserves to win. Same to Mr. Brasky, congratulations, and a happy Thanksgiving to everyone. See you in December.
Thank you. Mr. Galloway?
I just following up my congratulations with the soon to be Commissioner Harvey and and Mr. Brasky.
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I called you three times after the election.
Now, thank you for for those thanks, and obviously, I just want to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving, and, you know, we'll see you, you know, I guess, in a month or so. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.